Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock and a quorum present, I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Board for December 18th to order. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 29, 2023, this meeting is being conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so either in person or via the Zoom link, which is available on the town website. We have no administrative notes this evening, so let me go first to our announcements. The next Planning Board meeting will be on January the 7th. That is a special joint meeting with the Select Board for the purpose of appointing a new member to the Planning Board to temporarily fill the seat vacated by a resigning member. Our first regular meeting of the new year will be the following day, January the 8th. There will be three listening sessions for the master plan in January. January 6th, that's a Monday, will be in Cedarville at the Cedarville Fire Station. Thursday, January 16th, will be at Manomet Elementary School. And Wednesday, January 29th, will be at Redbrook, where I imagine a number of you are from. We look forward to everyone's participation. Everyone is, of course, welcome and encouraged. After the January listening sessions, that will be the end of the live meetings for a period of time for the winter, which will give our consultants some time to gather their data and listen to the various public comments they received and start to put together plans so that we can discuss those at our next live sessions in the spring. That doesn't mean, of course, that planning will stop. There will still be online activity available, and obviously, anyone interested in a group still coming together to provide comment or hear more is welcome to do so, and I encourage them to contact the Planning Department and talk to Lauren Lind about a master plan session. Moving to our first item tonight, it's ZBA 4145, 25 Wellington Road, Richard Tocchi, special permit required per Section 203, 9C to expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure and per 203, 9D, 1B, 2 to waive required side yard setback to construct an addition. This is a special permit, so the Planning Board is advisory to the ZBA. Mr. Hartman?
So I think I'll just give a presentation of the petitioners' representatives here if you have some questions. So this is 25 Wellington Road. This home is a single-family home. What they're looking to do is a second-floor addition that complies with zoning and meets all setbacks and a 10-by-30, 300-foot addition to the front of the house. They're here before the Planning Board and then the zoning board because they need a waiver of the side yard setback from 10 feet to 7 feet. So again, this is a pretty minor one. They have a letter of support from the neighbor who's on the side where the setback is 7 feet, and that 7 feet is the current setback of the current building. This just simply extends it 10 feet wider to the front of the house. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the audience first, anyone wishing to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the Board. Questions, Mr. Donaldson?
I have no questions.
Mr. Grandy?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Nor do I. That being said, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ZBA 4145.
I have a motion to recommend to the ZBA approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and all of us present, motion, all in favor. It is unanimous. Next to our agenda, we have an informal presentation. Redbrook, clarification of vote for confirmation of unit count.
So I'll start, and then the representatives can jump in and fill in whatever else they'd like. So the Board looked at this issue before and decided to table it and seek some review and advice from Town Council. You have Town Council's memo there before you. Just to go over quickly, in 2008, when the special permit was issued by the Planning Board, there were 336 units approved from the Agawam Core, that's the center part of the development, and they added 248 transfer development rights into the development from outlined properties. And that, I point out that 248 acre, 248 TDRs actually protected about 680 acres in other locations in the town. There's a factor in the zoning bylaw that says that you take a single-family four-bedroom house and you can convert it to a one-bedroom, a three-bedroom, or a two-bedroom unit, the number of units that you get changes or can increase. So if you have one-bedroom units, it's more than what you would, a TDR has a higher value. So those 248 TDRs were the equivalent of 736 additional units that came in, and that was the original permit that recognized, it recognized that. Since 2008, 494 TDRs have been added to this development. That's protecting over 1,300 additional acres. And again, the whole role of TDRs is to take some land and protect it, shift that development right into an area that's equipped to handle that development, water, wastewater, those types of facilities. So again, since 2008, 494 more TDRs were added to the site, protecting about 1,300 acres in other areas, much of which is nearby to this development. And I would note that that didn't really, those TDRs were transferred in, but the developer and the town never talked about or added any additional development to the project, even though they added those development rights. If you see in Town Council's memo, it states that what other purpose could be served by creating additional TDRs but not to increase the dwelling units? So again, they looked at this, they looked at the language of the Board's vote that says that additional TDRs could be added, and their conclusion is, there's no other reason why that language would be there except to acknowledge that additional development could be added to the project through the transfer development right portion of the bylaw. A.D. Makepeace admits that they could have done a better job with this and a better job as we were going through this process to talk about how we were landing TDRs. They didn't do that, and certainly on staff's side, we could have done a better job, but that, that was not, you know, something that really came up through the process of how those TDRs were actually being landed. With that being said, they acknowledged that some of this, the responsibility is on them, although those 494 TDRs could be hundreds of additional development units, they acknowledged that that's not what they're asking for. What they're looking to do is just add the 113 affordability that they're required to do or committed above and beyond what they were required, but committed to do, and have that 113 added in addition to the 1175. I believe my recommendation for you is that that's a reasonable request. They protected over 1,300 acres of land to have those TDRs added to the development. No other development in the town is required to have their development, their affordability as just part of their base. So again, working with the developer and working with the community, I think that this additional 113 is hundreds of units less than what they could have asked for by the TDRs that they added. And again, as I've stated before, this is, every other development this Board has reviewed or the zoning Board has reviewed, the affordable units are above and beyond the base. As we drafted, and you have a draft recommendation vote and motion before you, you'll notice that they're handed out a highlighted section of the vote that we added, and it says that the petitioner agrees that this vote resolves the issues related to TDRs, transfer development rights for this project, and acknowledges that the total unit count does not exceed 1,288. So that would be the base unit count plus the affordability, and that language is built right in here to say that they're acknowledging that even with the TDRs they've added, this addresses and resolves the issue. So again, I'm not sure if the proponent has anything to add, but that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Please, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I do have a presentation, maybe eight minutes of your time, if you don't mind, that I'd like to just go through. We have printed copies. I wasn't sure if you already had paper copies, so we just wanted to share those with you. Evan?
Give one for Lee and Deb. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, staff, residents of Plymouth. My name is Dan Gorsuga, Vice President of Agawam Development and Project Executive for the Redbrook Community. We are here this evening to request clarification on the total number of market rate and affordable units regarding our development rights and associated bylaws. I just rolled the battery.
All that has to do is work for the next eight minutes.
Yes, two of them are already gone.
All right, I'll talk fast. We'd just like to take a few minutes to provide a brief history of the Redbrook concept and what's been created to date, and we hope to continue. Redbrook, as you all know, is a master planned mixed-use community located in South Plymouth. It provides an exceptional opportunity to create a vibrant and inclusive neighborhood where people from all walks of life can live, work, and thrive together. By offering a diverse range of housing options, including for sale, rental, workforce housing, and affordable housing, the community becomes a welcoming space for individuals and families of varying incomes and backgrounds. This diversity fosters a strong sense of community, promoting connections among neighbors and cultivating a rich, dynamic atmosphere. Thoughtfully designed amenities such as the community YMCA, the Market Square with pickleball, coffee, and baked goods, a village green anchored by two restaurants, a meeting house, and a medical office with physical therapy and primary care, and walkable pathways, all of which enhance the quality of life, making it easy to residents to balance family, work, and leisure in one cohesive setting. This transformative project represents a collaborative effort spanning almost 20 years between the town, community groups, and us as the developer, ensuring that the vision aligns with local values and needs. In addition to its social benefits, the project emphasizes sustainable growth and conservation while providing economic advantages to the town. The use of private roads and self-managed utilities significantly reduce the demand for municipal services, minimizing the need for local resources. At the same time, the inclusion of commercial and retail spaces not only supports local businesses and job creation, but also generates increased commercial tax revenue for the town. By thoughtfully integrating development with open space preservation, this community exemplifies responsible land use and environmental stewardship, ensuring long-term resilience and sustainability while fostering a thriving, connected, and inclusive environment. 2008, the Plymouth Planning Board issued the special permit for River Run, now known as Redbrook. As stated before, the special permit acknowledged and approved a base density of 336 units and 248 transferable, transferable development rights, known as TDRs, for a total of 584 development rights. Throughout the special permit, and as highlighted in the memo from Town Council, there are several occasions where the permit anticipates the approval and use of additional TDRs. In fact, shortly after issuance of the special permit, the Planning Board issued 494 additional TDRs, increasing the total development rights to 1,078, which included 742 TDRs and 336 base density. It's important to note that the special permit and highlighted in the memo specifically says TDRs are not for affordable units and only apply to determine the total number of market rate units. As previously discussed, the practice in Plymouth calculates affordable housing units only after determining the total market rate dwellings. Based on the base density plus TDRs, this traditional practice adopted and indeed codified in the inclusionary bylaw and also referenced in the memo from Town Council and ourselves. The approved development rights are then converted to dwelling units using the traditional rural village development, Trevid, bylaw conversion tables to create dwelling units. And as Mr. Hartman said, it depends on what type of housing, what they convert to. As you can see the chart there, if you're doing attached dwelling units, you could do five of one-bedroom attached dwelling units for one transfer development right. The map on the screen represents the development plan for Redbrook. The area with black and white dotted hatches represent the use areas that have been approved by the Planning Board over the past decade. The areas identified in green are areas that we have identified as future development that are intended, were intended to receive development rights. These areas are consistent with the master plan special permit and the associated exhibits. To date, out of the 1,078, 78 development rights, 717 of them, including 336 base density and 381 TDRs, have been implemented through the use area plan process. Using the conversion table and the Trevid bylaw, the 717 development rights have converted to 1,136 dwelling units, 1,049 market rate, and 87 affordable. This leaves a balance of 360 TDRs intended for the use in the green areas. As mentioned previously, the development areas are then converted to dwelling units using the conversion table. Per the Trevid bylaw, the remaining dwellments can be used and converted to various housing types well above 360 dwelling units when using attached products. I just wanted to touch base on the conservation efforts that Mr. Hartman brought up. Excuse me. By concentrating our development on a smaller footprint, this approach minimizes urban sprawl and maximizes land efficiency, leaving room for meaningful conservation efforts. In this case, the community's commitment to sustainable planning has resulted in the permanent protection of over 1,760 acres of land to date. A majority is contiguous to the Agawam River Corridor and the Miles Standish State Forest. These conserved areas provide vital habitats for wildlife, preserve natural ecosystems, and offer residents access to green spaces that enhance quality of life while supporting long-term environmental stewardship. Our company and the Redbrook community are deeply committed to creating a positive and lasting impact through various initiatives that benefit both residents and the surrounding area. Land conservation remains a priority, significant efforts to preserve open space and protect natural habitats and resources. We've also donated land for municipal use, supporting essential services and future town needs. To address traffic concerns, we have implemented off-site traffic improvements that ease congestion while promoting a little bit more pedestrian-friendly and more accessible from a mobility standpoint. Additionally, we have contributed monetary funds to enhance public safety, ensuring the community has the resources it needs. As part of the commitment to local education and recreation, we've developed a mixed-use ball field at the local elementary school, providing a valuable space for learning, sports, and community engagement. Today, these initiatives reflect our dedication to building a sustainable, connected, and thriving community. It does appear that over the years since the special permit was issued, ourselves and the relevant parties have paid great attention to each use area in each phase of the project. But unfortunately, we did not pay adequate attention to the special permit as written and its overall intent when referencing the project during the various use area approvals. That said, having refreshed our memories with respects to the rights and commitments as detailed in the special permit, associated bylaws, the memo from Town Council, and our memo response, we are hopeful that this presentation has been informative and helpful. We request that the Planning Board clarify our right to use the approved development rights to create 1,175 market rate dwelling units and 113 affordable units. This clarification is appropriate and necessary to facilitate the completion of the project contemplated by the special permit and does not derogate from the purposes of the intent of the zoning bylaw of the town of Plymouth or its special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from staff? Anything further from staff? So as noted, this is an informal, this is not a required public hearing, public comment is not mandated. However, in an effort to make sure that everyone is heard and we understand everyone's concerns, I am going to open up this, this up to public comment. I am going to limit public comment, however. I want to let everyone know that the Planning Board has already heard many resident concerns. We've heard comments from people with varying views. We've met with them personally. We have received written comments. We've received telephone calls. So we do understand the issues. And with that in mind, I'm going to open this up, I'm going to ask that it be limited to residents of Redbrook and the immediate surrounds because this is a Redbrook issue. It's not a townwide issue when it comes to this. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to hold people to three minutes, and after we get to a certain point, I am going to just simply say that we have heard and understood things. I don't mean to cut people off. I don't want to do that. But we have spent a lot of time. I want people to understand, we have already spent a lot of time, and we do understand you. This is not an effort in any way, shape, or form to quell comment, but we do understand what the issues are, and we are making our determination based primarily on the legal letters that we have received from our council. We have some wiggle room here, but again, a lot of this is legal-based, so I want people to understand as well that we have some constraints placed upon us. So with that, I'm going to start with people in the room. Who would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Kimberly Caris from Nine Sunflower Way in Redbrook. Legal-based. We all love living at Redbrook. We want to stay at Redbrook. Mr. Gorsuga said, "We didn't pay attention to the language in this special permit." Well, when we bought in, we had recorded instruments that we relied on that had the 1,175 units, including in a parenthetical, the language was clear. And the letter to Town Council, I stand by that I and others authored dated July 17th that was copied to this Board by email. So we stand by that position, that legal position. And the KP Law letter expressly acknowledges the author, the seasoned attorney who wrote that letter, for the public who hasn't read it, said, "It is my legal opinion that the," and I'm quoting, "The more defensible legal position is that the special permit explicitly limits the total number of units to 1,175 comprised of both market rate and affordable units." The letter goes on to say, this is the KP Law letter that this town paid for, "The MOUs and the use area approvals are strong evidence that the parties intended the total number of market rate and affordable units to be 1,175 units, and if this was error, there have been multiple opportunities and documents exchanged between the parties where the total unit count or total market rate count could have been clarified or corrected. That never happened in all these years." So the town and ADM and everyone else has dropped the ball on this, and it seems to be a pattern at Redbrook, is dropping the ball, not paying attention to, yet we're held to what's in our recorded instruments. These were recorded instruments that buyers of property with lawyers all relied on, and we, and I implore on you to hold ADM to that. All that aside, I implore on you to pause or stop approving any additional units in development because right now, we have a dysfunctional wastewater treatment facility, and we're paying the price for that. The facility by its own records, ADM's records presented at a recent RAC meeting, is $10 million in the whole and has a, quote, "current estimated total cost of $20 to $25 million." And it cannot even handle currently the sewage that's coming in and out of Redbrook today. It has to pump out off-site 7,500 gallons of effluent per day. And they keep that number, it's not interesting, per day. Well, what is it per week? 52,500,000 gallons per week. What is it per month? 210,000 gallons of effluent, 2.7 million per year in the last two years. That's a whole lot of effluent. What are the issues? Improper design, construction, maintenance, collection? What's going on? Growth needs to be smart, and this isn't smart. Infrastructure needs to be in place. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Keith Grauplin for River Birchway. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. The biggest issue I've always had was, is coming up with this final unit count, and with Dan's presentation tonight, it just makes it even more alarming that I, I still don't believe the 1,288 is going to be the final number based on the TDRs that are available. And a couple of the slides that really point out, and I'm not sure if you can pull them up or not, but there was a slide about developmental use areas that are left. There are two use areas that no one talks about that are, that are showing up on this map. One is currently a solar field, and the other one is behind it. I would call them use areas 17 and 18. And there's no way they have enough units to fill those two spaces, use areas, based on what's left to build. I can see 13, 14, and 16. They can massage those numbers and finish those neighborhoods. But my biggest concern is that what is signed and what is believed by the town, the Board, and ADM is that I'm afraid they're going to come back and say, "Well, we got the TDRs. We're going to continue to build in Redbrook." And the thing that strikes me the most was one of his slides when he requests for clarification under the conversion, which is the first part of the slide. He says, "Although the special permit and the Trevid laws allow 360 development rights to be converted into more than 360 units, we do not plan to do so unless requested by the town to address housing needs." To me, that's just a big opening. I'm sorry. I just can't trust anybody at this point, after living here for nine years, that a future Board or a future Planning Department or future ADM employees are not going to come back and request that they develop those two pieces of use areas down the road. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page going forward. I, I just want this thing to be done, you know? And I want the affordability taken care of. I mean, everybody knows that's all I talk about, but we are way under the affordability. And if you go back and look at some of the old minutes for some of the old Board meetings in 2017, 2019, I know most of the people weren't here, but they actually were mentioning in those minutes that when they were going to put in a use area, that five affordability were going to be indispersed, and when they were going to do barefoot cottage, two affordability were going to be indispersed. So I blame the town for basically taking the minutes and approving these use areas but never following up on the affordability that ADM actually stated they were going to put in some of the use areas prior to today. So go back and look at the minutes. I love FOIA. FOIA was great because they gave me all the minutes from all the Boards. And if you read through these things, it's shame on the Boards back then for not following up and doing their due diligence to make sure these affordables were built, because that's when the time was that we could afford these affordability. Those, those cottage homes were going for 350, the Whitman Town Homes were going for 350. So we could have done affordability way before this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening. John Ratchlis, Redbrook resident, also a member of the Redbrook Advisory Committee, which advises, is a liaison between the community and ADM. I'm up here both as a member of the RAC and as an individual to strongly support the higher number. And before I get into the reasons why, I just want to say that we share the concerns that have been expressed tonight concerning the wastewater plant. And there's no question that, that mistakes were made on multiple sides leading up to this, but we have to look at what's best for Redbrook going forward. The land is there. The water is there. Agawam water can supply enough water for these extra houses. The wastewater capacity, which is an issue today in December 2024... The wastewater capacity, which is an issue today in December 2024, with the retrofit of the plant coming online in March, should not be an issue for the new houses. Financially, it's $225,000 a year approximately in LOA fees to help support the community. Going back to wastewater, it's approximately $3.2 million in hookup fees, which could be applied to the existing debt. Because the plant has capacity, because the water plant has capacity, there's no new capital expenditures with the additional 113 houses. And the nice side effect is the $1 million in taxes to the town from these, the additional construction. But what about the impact on the community? And I've been in Red Brook now for 13 months, and my hope was that I was moving into a community. And everything has exceeded my expectations. And all of us want to keep that. And I'd like to welcome 113 new families into Red Brook and share with them what I've experienced, my wife and I have experienced over the last 13 months. Having more residents will provide more customers for the commercial base around the Village Green. Hopefully, we can get some more small businesses in there. Fees go up. It's inevitable. And when the LOA fee goes up, having that fee spread over an additional 10% basically of households is going to mitigate that fee increase for everyone. And the same goes for any costs or assessments in the future. And an assessment, as you know, is the word we all fear in any community that has an LOA. Again, those costs are spread across a greater base.
If you could wrap up, please. You're a little over three minutes now. Just wrap up, please.
Thank you. Wrap up. Okay, sure. So in conclusion, I feel that the positives for this far outweigh any negatives. And in fact, I have not been able to find a negative. And it is unanimous support of the advisory committee for the higher number. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening. My name is Robert Sullivan. I'm a resident of Red Brook and reside at 36 Way Clova Trail. Just like my previous RAC member, I also belong to the advisory committee here at Red Brook. I purchased my home in 2019. I've resided there ever since, and I'm extremely happy with everything that's been going on there. That's why I bought the home and that's why I stayed there. And I've actually brought friends and family down that have moved in. Shortly after moving in back in 2019, I joined the amenities committee, which was under the leadership of the previous regime, Mr. Michael Hogan. In 2022, I applied, interviewed, and was selected to join the Red Brook Advisory Committee, referred to as the RAC. As a note, under the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, that is the advisory committee that's obligated to be run. It's supposed to meet quarterly. It's for the declarant period only. And currently, the RAC meets with ADM members once a month. We meet amongst ourselves with RAC members only, the residents, once a month. We also have different co-chairs, of which I am one of the co-chairs of the RAC committee. We also sit on the board of the LOA, the two co-chairs. We've discussed and put into practice different subcommittees for preparing for the transition, the wastewater subcommittee, financial committees, budgets, the reserve accounts, and investments. In the last year, we've had a few different meetings I'd like to just tell you about briefly and tell you why we support and why we believe most of the residents support it. Back in early 2024, we introduced ourselves to the community, went over to South High School. We brought in 150, 200 people. We introduced, we went over the different subcommittees. We invited people to join the RAC. We invited people to join and help us move into the transition in the different subcommittees. We brought in additional members that the RAC itself interviewed and brought on. We do attend different precinct 17, planning board meetings like this, the grant and presentation, and the annual town meetings. The last planning board that we were here, there were problems with some of the neighborhoods in Red Brook that you gentlemen have all heard about. We addressed those with the neighbors by having meetings at the meeting house right at Red Brook. We spoke to ADM. We came up with a new neighborhood liaison, so each neighborhood could have a resident that could address the concerns and deal with, directly with the RAC. So we've done that. Those two neighborhoods, I think, have been successful, bringing in neighborhood liaisons and resolving the issues. It's still ongoing work. And then just recently here in November, we had the second RAC meeting where we addressed a lot of the discussions that are going on here tonight, the financial implications, the community items update, financial updates. Residents presented with current ongoing issues, the numbers, the 1175 versus the 1288. We presented the financial impact about the differences, whether we had more or less homes there. And the previous RAC members spoke to those. John spoke about how the financial impact. So we spoke to that. We have overwhelming support. We have about 150 people that showed up at the November meeting. By a show of hands, overwhelming majority, one of the additional numbers for all the reasons we've brought forth tonight. So we, the RAC, speaking for the residents, support the 1288 count. We say thank you to you. And anytime you want to come down and meet with any member of the RAC, we have restaurants, we have coffee shops. We'd invite you down and enjoy what we have down there and discuss anything in the future. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. My name is Ed Harrington. I'm at 20 Cranberry Farm Road. And I'll be really quick. If this board is going to authorize additional growth at Red Brook, it should require an independent engineering report, an independent hydrological assessment of the wastewater treatment facility, and require a corrective plan going forward before any occupancy premise are granted. And one more comment. I was at that RAC meeting, and there was not overwhelming support for going forward. He asked for a raise of hands, and no more than half the people raised their hands. There wasn't any survey of anyone at Red Brook discussing whether people wanted more homes built or not. So if the RAC wishes to do a survey and then come back to the board with results, I'll be happy with that. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tony Garudas. I live in Lotus Drive in the Woodlands. And I think the majority of people in the Woodlands are in support of the higher number, but we, for the reasons that have been expressed already. But there are some caveats or some requirements we would like to see. One is, I think it's very important that the ecological integrity of Deer Pond and the adjacent kettle ponds are preserved during any future construction and after the construction's completed. And as we've already heard, we'd like to hear from a third party, an independent party, that this new wastewater facility will actually work when it's completed. Otherwise, the expansion makes no sense. And we're not very happy about the prospect of a $10,000 assessment to pay for mistakes that presumably were made by ADM and, is it Western and Sampson, the company that's built that? So finally, you know there are affordable homes in Cranberry Cove that have just been completed. There are empty lots in Deer Pond Ridge, and there are abandoned foundations in the Woodlands. We think, particularly if there's an assessment to pay for the debt on the wastewater facility, there's no way that these homes could ever be affordable. So we would like to see those transferred to market price homes and the affordable homes be built in the additional use areas that are being targeted by ADM.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leiden, I'm going to, I'm going to limit this to Red Brook residents. I appreciate that. Anyone else in the room?
Mr. Chair. My name is Raymond Marcel. I'm on Sunflower Way. I have one question, and it is, I agree with everything that's been said on the positive side. I have, that one question is, with the admitted fault that we've seen in the wastewater development and the exorbitant $10 million charge has been, we're now starting to focus on, how can we entertain additional units when we can't even take care of the units that are there, let alone try to take care of the affordable units that have yet to come up? And to me, that's the overriding question. And to address that question with no transparency is just shooting dice on a table. And I find awful lot of fault with that, to take it on the chin, saying, "We will correct it," when it hasn't been corrected in 14 years. Seems ludicrous. With that, I say, how can we go forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for anyone in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Hutchinson, 14 Summer Sweet Circle in Red Brook. I have an ongoing concern about density in Red Brook and especially density at the center of the village. So the question for me here this evening is about that density. Most of the folks here this evening signed up based on the promise on the marketing table in the meeting house. And that table showed an idyllic map of a community that had been advertised as 1,175 units rounded up in some newspapers, but it was advertised regionally, advertised locally, and the impression that customers, that people who invested in their homes, had of that as a density of the 1,175. And it was 1,175 units, not 1,175 TDRs. TDRs are kind of a technical term that the planning board, or not the planning board, but the planning department negotiated with ADM in 2008 or around then. And the term really didn't come up until very, very recently. So 1,175 advertised units, not TDRs. What we were looking for was many price points with levels of affordability and what looked like a modest number of apartments. Now, while the entire community has welcomed the development of affordable units, and in my case, I expected to see affordable houses in my own Winterberry neighborhood, as I'm sure others did in other neighborhoods, that's all over. This request for units beyond the 1,175 will allow for an additive concentration of apartments and problems of density in the center of the village. Before you vote to allow this increased density, please consider not just the building units, but also the environment, the traffic density, safety, and other factors that are represented by these additional units. The additive units also have regional implications. The more traffic density in Red Brook, the more traffic problems on roads and neighborhoods that feed Red Brook and that Red Brook feeds. More traffic around Long Pond Road, Halfway Pond Road, Bourne Road, Waram Road, South, longer bus rides for the kids from Buttermilk Bay. I urge you to keep the limit at 1,175. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. Kevin O'Neil, 10 Daisy Lane. I'd like to say that I agree with the comments that were made earlier by Keith and also by Kim. My comments would be, if we're going to consider the higher figure, I really would like to find out how Red Brook's going to get out of this supposed $10 million deficit that they're in, or debt that's, has been built up. But I'd also like to see the board put some demands upon ADM to say, "What's your plan to finally get to the 113 affordable units? They've got empty lots that we just heard about, and they still have a long way to go." I'd like to know what those commitments are going to be and what those timelines are. Plain and simple.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hartman, anyone online? Opening it up to anyone online who'd like to speak.
Yes, we have one hand up at this point. Ms. Ryan?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your conference. My name is Mari Ryan. I live at 33 Mountain Lower Way in the Red Brook community. My request to you, the members of the planning board, is that you stand by the 2008 permit decision, only allowing a total of 1,175 dwelling units, including the affordable units. I purchased my home in the Red Brook community purposely because I wanted to be in a small community. The number that we were sold was always 1,175. And that's what we were, that's what we expected when we bought here. Each additional unit, not to mention 10% more, could stress on the community infrastructure, such as the wastewater utilities, the water resources, and generates, as Joe has just indicated, more traffic and safety concerns, which increase seemingly by the day. Broken promises have really brought us to where we are today. ADM promised to build affordable housing. They have not done that. The planning board owns holding the developer accountable to building those affordable units. That also hasn't happened. At the July planning board meeting, where many of us sat here, the ADM promised they would meet with residents to discuss the wastewater treatment plant issues. That never happened. Now ADM won't even hold meetings with residents when they're requested. They refer everyone back to the RAC. How's that good faith management? And the RAC, while they say that they're, that the majority of people are in favor of the larger number, they've done no systematic data collection. They did raising hands in a room that probably represented less than 10% of the owners. That's not good faith management. That's not representing the voices of the residents. Now you're asking us, the homeowners of Red Brook, to stand by and wait while ADM develops more units. Allowing additional units puts the transfer of ownership to the Land Owners Association that much further out into the future. And in the meantime, ADM has no accountability for racking up tens of millions of dollars in debt due to their mismanagement of the wastewater treatment plant. Your decision puts additional burden on the property owners in Red Brook. I'd like to ask, when is the town going to look after the taxpayers, not just the developers? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Scott.
Yes. My name is Scott McMillan. I'm a resident of Red Brook. I live at 51 Wisteria Road. I don't really have anything new to say, other than I wholeheartedly support the opinions that were offered this evening by Ms. Kurech, Ms. Ryan, Mr. Gravely, and Mr. Hutchinson, particularly with respect to the fact that the number needs to be held at 1,175 for all the reasons that they gave. And I just want the board to know that the RAC does not represent the residents. It's a handpicked group that's largely a mouthpiece of ADM. And I don't believe that the residents overall, for a lot of the reasons stated before, I don't believe that the residents overall support the increased number. So that's, I'm just, I'm just kind of underscoring the opinions that have already been made. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Is there anyone else on Zoom? Raise your hand so we can see it, if you'd like to speak. I think we're good.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Mr. DeGorsika, if you'll step up. Mr. Gorsuch, if you'll step up for questions from the board, if there are any.
Just before, just to let you know, I have counsel here with me this evening, so depending on the level of question or legality behind it, I may have him stand up and answer some of those questions.
That's perfectly appropriate. We're looking for answers, not to surprise or hold anybody, their feet to the fire tonight. That'll come later. I'm going to refer this back to the board, to any questions. Mr. Grandy, I'll start with you.
So we've heard a lot here this evening about your storage treatment facility. Can you update us a little bit on the facility and what's happening since our meeting in July, when it came up?
Sure.
Please.
You know, we do understand, and we do appreciate the people's concerns. Frankly, I share some of them as well. They are residents of the community. They have right to voice the concerns. You know, we have to remember, there's over, at this point, 740-plus or minus homes, plus rentals. There's over 1,000 dwelling units occupied here, over 2,000 people, along with commercial tenants. Redbrook's a community, it's governed by, you know, the Board of Directors, the covenants. It also has an advisory committee, which acts as a liaison, something that you've heard this evening. As far as wastewater goes, we are working right now on a couple of things. Weston Sampson, they are expanding the plant right now. That expansion is set to be done in March. Along the way, we've been informing the advisory committee of that status and some issues that we are experiencing. And we look forward to continue that open dialogue with them. Frankly, you know, I hear the lack of transparency. The only reason why people are aware of this is because we have told the advisory committee, who then therefore had a meeting. It's just very difficult having one-off meetings with various individuals all the time, rather than having a liaison that it's intended to, to have those meetings, and then therefore can have their own. And again, we look forward to keeping them up to date and discussing those. As it relates to wastewater, it's important to note, we have a groundwater discharge permit. It's governed by DEP, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And as we work through that expansion, although there are some challenges, we, for the 10 years that I've been involved, that system has never once had an issue of noncompliance when it relates to effluent and stuff that's going in the ground. There's been no environmental issues, stuff like that. What we're experiencing now is twofold. We're in the middle of expansion. There are times when parts of the system have to come offline to do for the expansion. And then in addition to that, there are pieces of the system that are not functioning as intended, based on the technology that's there. When we were aware of that, we made a switch during the expansion to change that technology. That's what we're implementing now. It's also important to note, going forward, everything, regardless of this evening, everything that we come back has to go back through the use area process. So all these questions or comments or concerns regarding wastewater, traffic, or water will be discussed at those use areas, and those are part of those approvals.
So that was going to be my next question to staff. In order to expand, you still have to come back to the planning board for a review of those development areas. How much development is left that has already been approved is another question.
So I just want to make sure I answer the question appropriately.
What's been approved by the planning board that you're able to permit right now, what is left to build on those particular approvals?
All right, if you don't mind, bear with me one second. I just don't want to misquote the numbers. So to date, the planning board has approved, and I'm going to do base density TDRs, and then go into what that means from a unit perspective. So to date, the planning board has approved the use of 336 base density units, 381 TDRs for a total of 717 development rights. That translates to, again, sorry, I just don't want to misquote. That translates to what you have approved is 1,136 units total.
I'm talking about what's already approved, other than the other use group areas that we're going to, maybe approve in the future after they're reviewed, so.
I believe what Mr. Grandy is asking is, how many units remain to be built in use areas that we have already approved?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. In use area 10 and 11, combine those two to open lots, there's five. Use area 12 is fully sold out. The affordable units are done. We're just going through state processes and lottery and all that good fun stuff. And then in use area six, phase five, I'm going to spitball, just because I need to go back to numbers, is probably about 25-ish or so that have been approved that aren't completed yet.
Okay, so any?
Oh, sorry. And then the, sorry, thank you. The Grantham group project that was approved, those 62 units have not yet been constructed either.
Okay. So there was also some comments made about, I know all of this is going to be reviewed in the future, empty foundations that affordable units are supposed to be on. We've had multiple discussions with this board, and over the years, I've been on this board for 14 years, I was the alternate when this was approved. There was the opinion of the other board members, two of them have passed away since. Thinking back to those meetings that we had, the many that we had on this particular approval scenario for this property, that through transfer of development rights, there may be more units added. Again, the mistake was made that we assumed, or I did as a planning board member, that you were being controlled and watched throughout the process. Until we got to the Grantham and got the actual numbers, and now we're seeing that the numbers, you're a little lagging behind as far as the affordable units are concerned. So obviously, that's a concern of the entire board, and planning staff, and yourself. So, and also in the letter from staff, it did give the planning board a couple of different options in the opinion that was written to the planning board. And I myself agree with the RAC and the other members that came up, that yes, we should be approving the additional unit and limit it to 1,288, and finalize the number so that we're not looking to guess what the number is. But I would certainly suggest we finalize it this evening through a vote of the planning board, and end the discussion that keeps on happening as far as this project is concerned. So, and I know my other board members have quite a few questions, and I might have another later on. So I will divulge now to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Donaldson?
No problem. So I know I've asked you this before, and I'm looking for an update, and it also came up with someone from the public in regards to what is actually the current plan right now on the affordable units? Where are we standing? What is it looking like in the near future?
Yep. So through the Grantham process, we committed to do 10 additional to the 103, so that would be a total of 113. We have 62 of them approved as part of the Grantham project. We have another 15 that's approved through use area seven, those two phases. That gets you to 77. We have another five right now that are in use area 10 and 11 that are not occupied. And in full disclosure, as a resident said, the trouble we're having now is not getting those built. What we would end up like to do, come back to this board and have that discussion about reverting those back to market rate, and then putting those five into another project. But with that said, so I'm not going to count those for right now. So that's 77. We have another three that are being constructed right now in use area 12. That's in the state process now. We were informed that legal comment will be back by the end of December, which means the lottery will start, not the lottery, sorry, the marketing effort will start taking place in January. It's like a 12-week timeline, then they'll go out, you know, you're picking the candidates, and you're doing your whole thing. Candidly, I think at that point in time, when that process happens, that will really provide us feedback as far as the people qualifying to buy these homes and being able to afford in Redbrook. But those three homes, credit to Eric Pontiff, who's building those homes, he built them, they're constructed, they're not yet at CEO level, but they're getting close, and we're going to be starting that market. So that's three of them, which is 80. Then Whitman Homes also has two of them. They are not under construction yet. But again, that's in the same process as Pontiff, meaning that they're going through regulatory now, and then marketing will start. They're just holding off on constructing at the moment. So that gets you to 82, if I'm doing my math correctly. And again, I'm not including those other five. So that gives us a total of 31 remaining. We have a couple of future use areas that we're looking at now that will equate for some of them. The reason why I say some of them, I think throughout this process, not only planning board process, but true economic process, and actually listening to our residents, and Carl, I know you and I, we might disagree on this, but I think multifamily might be the way to go, whether it's another version of Grantham, meaning, when I say a version, meaning lower affordability, maybe a different demographic, maybe the same, but a much smaller scale than what we're doing. We look forward to keep on having those conversations, but candidly, I think because of the community that we're in, the rate of the AMIs, the LOA fees, the wastewater and water, that may be the best way to do, to actually accomplish the affordable housing.
I don't disagree in the aspect of, you know, the multifamily aspect. It's, I mean, I think you referred to my comments before when I said it would be...
I listen, and I take them to heart, believe it. I hear you.
Right, and I appreciate you listening and bringing it back to me. So my other question is, as far as, and I asked you this before, in regards to the density in the town, Centoelo, what do you guys call it? You call it the?
Village Center.
Village Center, sorry. What are you, what is actually being in the pipeline or proposed in regards to anyone, people may have issues with the density in the village?
So right now, other than Grantham, right now, there is nothing being proposed. But everyone knows me in this room. That doesn't mean nothing's happening. It just means there's nothing happening now. In my own opinion, I still will think that behind the meeting house is a good place for some mix of residential, not at the scale that we tried proposing before, I understand that, but there is that parcel there. But right now, full disclosure, nothing in the pipeline as far as proposed development.
Okay, so we talked about the wastewater with Mr. Grandy. That was my other question. I just want to make sure I look at my notes. I believe that's all I have for it. It's now, I yield back to the chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. I think obviously we've heard what the concerns are. The board is going to echo those concerns. There are certain things we can and certain things we can't do as a board. The board does not have control over the internal operations of your LOA and of your business. So we can't address the, what seems to be the elephant in the room, which is supposedly a $10 million expense associated with your wastewater. I'm not going to get into that. I'm not going to ask you to address that here. That's not our business. What I am going to do is, I am going to, once again, ask you, with whatever candor you can or cannot have with the residents, have a meeting, a residence-wide meeting. I know you've done these in the past. Let's, I'm going to strongly urge you to do another one, and I'm going to ask anyone in the future who gets up and complains and says, "I haven't heard this," I'm going to ask them if they attended that meeting. Because if you're holding the meetings, you're holding the meetings, and people need to be made informed. But if you're not holding the meetings, I need to hold that against, and I know you call yourself AGOAM, we can call you ADM, we can call you Makepeace, I...
Understood.
But information's important here. We, as a planning board, can only convey the information that we get, and we try and do that. But we can also encourage the conveyance of information above and beyond what this board can do. And that's what I'm going to ask you to do. And I'm going to hear from the residents, I know, if you don't do it. And then you're going to get a call, and you're going to be standing back up here again, and you're going to be explaining, or someone else from, maybe someone even further up the food chain may be asked to come and explain. And it's going to ultimately impact where we go in the future. So that's a, I don't want to call it a shot across the bow, let's just call it a little flair for the moment, something to guide your future process and thinking, and your reporting to those who make those decisions. Anything further from my fellow board members? I'll ask Lee to read that. I'm going to ask Lee to read this. Okay. Back to staff. So before us, we have a motion, a proposed motion. And from the motion that went out in the packet, there was an additional, there was some additional language that was requested, that was requested based upon conversation with the residents, and if you could please read that language, Mr. Hartman, so we have that.
So the additional language is, the petitioner agrees that this vote resolves the issues related to the transfer of development rights, TDRs, for this project, and acknowledges that the total unit count does not exceed 1,288.
Okay, so let's be clear now. In the event that this board votes to approve as a total number, 1,288 units, inclusive, I hate the word "including" because that never works properly, lawyers go nuts with that, inclusive of the affordable housing unit. Let me be clear, that means that no matter how many TDRs ADM has, gets in the future, whatever they do, it does not change the fact that they will be capped at 1,288. That is the intention of this vote, correct, Mr. Hartman?
Correct.
Dan, can you go on the microphone and answer, please?
Can you verify on behalf that that is acknowledged and accepted? Because this is going to be here for posterity, so speak up.
I'm told that is correct. Thank you.
Okay. So for the residents who asked to make sure that that was an issue, we heard you, and we made sure that this additional language was put in there so that there is no question. So when the concerns are raised about what can happen with the future, it's in black and white right now. Now, I understand people have some concerns because, oh, well, this was something that was included in an MOU back in 2019, and why are we doing? MOU is very different. Memorandum of Understanding was simply a document between the planning department and ADM. That does not have the authority to change anything. This is a special permit before this board. Only a vote of this board may change that special permit, may modify it, may clarify it in any way, shape, or form. That's what our bylaws say. So this will be a vote of this board, making it crystal clear as to exactly what we're talking about. With that, I will open up, does anyone have any further comments or wish to make a motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the motion that we received in our packet this evening, including number five, that was read by Mr. Hartman this evening. We have the text in front of us?
Yes.
And that is my motion, to approve the text and the motion in front of us, to approve the total unit count does not exceed 1,288, and all the other paragraphs within the documents.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Donaldson?
None.
Mr. Grandy?
No, sir.
All right, I have my time now. Before us is a situation that has been created because of unclear documents, leading to conflicting understandings, which has been exacerbated by...
by a lack of clear direction, both in the way our TDR bylaw functions, and in the way that both ADM and the town communicated to ensure that required affordable housing was built in a timely fashion. We can't go back in time, but this board, in part, whether it's now or, takes responsibility for that. And we apologize. It shouldn't have happened, but it did. So we need to fix it. That's what we want to do. We need to fix it. The original permit was not clear. It says that the special permit provided for, quote, "up to one thousand one hundred and seventy-five new dwelling units based on the anticipated base density and transfer development rights." That's the language. And the type of units, whether those apartments, condos, single-family, that was left solely to the discretion of the developer. Total number of units also could be expanded by the planning board. That's called for in the special permit. With respect to affordable housing, again, we were unfortunately not clear. We should have been. Section 4G of the special permit included the requirement for affordable housing, quote, "in accordance with the requirements of section 205-71 of the zoning bylaw, as the same apply in a TRVD pursuant to section 205-72." Out of legalese, what that meant was per the terms of our inclusionary housing bylaw, which was passed by town meeting three years earlier. That provision had a couple of exceptions to it in the special permit. The first was that, notwithstanding the fact that under the TRVD or TRIVID bylaw, affordable housing units are based on the number of transfer development rights used, ADM agreed that no matter how many we use, the total number that we're going to build is one oh three. We're going to build a hundred and three affordable units, whether we use all, some, or none of the TDRs. That was their commitment. Second, the town agreed to a waiver allowing these units to be smaller and have less in the way of costly finishes than the market rate units. It was an unusual circumstance for the town, but that's actually in the special permit. I was surprised to read that myself. Now, many people have said, "Well, that means that the affordable units in the special implement, permit are included in the unit count." As our counsel has told us, and I agree, yes, that is the more defensible position. It is the more defensible position. But it is not the absolute position. One thing that I, as an attorney, have learned from thirty years, normally standing right there, talking to a judge up here, and I did that twice in this courtroom, tried cases here, I've learned that nothing is definitive when put before a judge or a jury. The only thing that's certain is the uncertainty. We need to establish certainty here. We need to establish certainty for the town, but more importantly, we need to establish certainty for you, the residents. You need to know what it is that's going forward. We created a situation by approving, as was mentioned, four hundred and ninety-four additional TDRs after the permit. That's what the town authorized. It's what this board, back in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, authorized. And yet, nobody, not the town and not ADM, said, "Oh gee, this means we can build more." But as counsel said, KP Law in the letter, Mr. Hartman quoted it correctly, the only reasonable assumption is that that's the only reason you do additional TDRs. You don't do additional TDRs for the sake of getting TDRs. Our bylaw doesn't really have a use for TDRs outside of using them. And ADM did put into conservation more land than they were required to for just the eleven hundred and seventy-five units. That's what they've done. So the town has already benefited from that, and they have, to their detriment, put it in there. So how do we deal with this? Now that we have this completely unclear circumstance, what are our options? Well, we have three options. One is to say that the number is, people say eleven seventy-five. Eleven eighty-five would be correct because we did authorize and they did, they agreed to an additional ten affordables as part of the Grantham project, eleven eighty-five. We could do that, and they can challenge it. We can go with twelve eighty-eight, which is the eleven seventy-five plus the one thirteen, and everybody says that that's an agreeable number, and that's a compromised number, and they'll accept that as being a reasonable interpretation of the existing permit and the circumstances as they have changed over the years. Or we could simply say, "We're not going to do anything, and we're going to fight this no matter what," and ADM can say, "Fine, we're going to ask to use every one of our TDRs however we want, which could result in, easily in excess of fifteen hundred units at Redbrook." All at the same time, this will do nothing but delay the process. And that's something that we are also very cognizant of. It's been mentioned that the longer that it takes for this issue to be resolved, the longer it ta, and for construction to be completed, the longer it takes for you, the residents of Redbrook, to take over the Land Owners Association. And that's an important factor. I want to note that the issue of tax revenue was raised as part of this. Uh, I did not consider that, nor will I consider that, as part of any determination that I make in terms of my vote. This is not an issue, as far as I'm concerned, of how much revenue the town gets. This is an issue of the permit for Redbrook, how it impacts you, the residents. So, given the language of the special permit, given our inclusionary housing bylaw, which says that affordable units are in addition to base units, given the past actions of the planning board in Makepeace, I'm in support of the twelve eighty-eight number as being a final and definitive number. But I will make it clear again that my support comes with the conditions that you've talked about. First, again, as the vote says, this is it. This is the final number, no more. I don't care how many more TDRs come out of the woodwork. This is it. Don't come back and ask for more. It's going to be, at least from my end, a resounding no. Second, this number is going to be contingent upon construction of all of the affordables that have been agreed to. And I'm going to make it clear, that means construction in Redbrook, not construction outside of Redbrook, cross-town, not payment in lieu. We're not going to be comfortable if something's immediately adjacent to Redbrook, if there's some value, that's fine. But we've had developers in the past who said, "Oh, well, you know, I've got this parcel of land somewhere over right next to Route Three, uh, that we can't use for anything else because the highway noise is horrible, let's put house, affordable housing there." That's not going to cut it with this board. And third, I want to make it clear, and as was said before, this is not a vote as to whether or not we approve the construction of any other particular units. This is simply capping a number. Any additional units, any new use areas, must come before this board. And that's going to be closely scrutinized. There's going to be some really hard questions there. Hard questions about the affordables and where we're at, and hard questions about the infrastructure, particularly your wastewater treatment. I've heard the suggestion that there be independent verification as to the capacity at the time of any new use area, and that's something that I'm going to recommend. So that's something that ADM should be prepared. We understand that you've got Weston and Sampson there, but Weston and Sampson has been there, and we've heard that it's not functioning quite the way expected. So I think it's fair to say that the residents and this board would have a little bit more comfort with an independent peer review, much as we've done in other projects, to make sure that if we're approving additional construction, you have the capacity for that construction, not without, without pumping out. I have no concerns that the, that Redbrook community wastewater system has violated its DE permit, DEP permit. I am sure they have not. We would have heard from that, and we'd have shut things down if that were the case. But merely complying with the permit is not necessarily enough when you're coming to build more. No more pumping. We approve new use, new use areas, it has to be able to function without additional pumping. That's going to be a question we're asking, and we're going to want independent verification. So again, those are our notices. So that's my statement with respect to where I stand on this. Anything further from members of the board? We have a motion in a second. Anything further?
No.
Fine. Take a vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, for speaking, for your time, for your effort. And again, understand, your voice is heard, and your voice will continue to be heard, and this board remains ready, willing, and interested in hearing you. The planning board for December eighteenth is back in session. Next on our agenda, we have an informal presentation, Nine Herring Pond Road, Dan Maybrook, an informal appearance regarding raising an existing structure and building a new three-story residential building with eighteen one-bedroom units, all of which will be affordable.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Rob Dambroso of Dambroso Law. Informal hearing, so no tie tonight. Bad joke, bad Christmas joke. Anyway, I'm here tonight for...
You ain't making fun of my tie, are you?
No, yours is beautiful. Thank you. Yeah. So anyway, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Dan Maybrook, the principal, the owner of the property, the LLC that owns Nine Herring Pond Road. As you can see, it's situated right, right against Route Three down in Cedarville. It's the current and longtime site of Maybrook Plumbing and Heating. So right now, we've got a commercial facility. Um, the building's aged, I guess, to politely describe it. Um, and, uh, and we're in a general commercial district. So, uh, we're here informally seeking feedback from the board before Mr. Maybrook forges ahead whole hog with his redevelopment plans to kind of take your temperature on the proposal and see what high-level guidance you may want to offer, um, as we set forth down the path. So what I'd like to do is give you a brief description of what's proposed, and then I've got Chris Anderson here, our civil engineer with Merrill, surveyors and engineers, um, that could give you a little more color on, on the site to the extent that you want it. Um, but again, big picture, uh, we've got an existing, um, building here that's going to be raised and replaced with this building. It's going to be a three-level building. Uh, good news is, we're not seeking any relief on dimensional standards, setbacks, height, et cetera. That's all going to comply with the bylaw. Um, parking will be provided as required per the bedroom count. Uh, this is proposed to be an eighteen-unit, eighteen one-bedroom units, uh, within the building. So in the general commercial district, you need a special permit to do multifamily. Um, and there's also a footnote to the, um, to the use table that, that directs you to a special permit that has another caveat about existing net floor area for buildings before nineteen ninety. So we're seeking a special permit, A, for that purpose, because we have to under the use table, and B, because I think this is unique in the sense that we're proposing a hundred percent affordable for the site. So all eighteen units would be affordable rental units. Um, that's the proposal. Um, and, uh, and I guess furthermore, Mr. Maybrook has been, uh, having some discussions with Roxanne, Roxanne Whitbeck. I don't think she's on tonight, but she's the director of Veteran Services for the town. Um, again, ideally, he'd like to tailor this to a veteran use. Um, you know, I don't believe we can restrict it to veterans if it's affordable, uh, per state guidance, but again, that would be a desirable use. Uh, we're near a GATRA stop here, uh, which is convenient for folks that may not need or have a vehicle. Um, and again, I'm trying to think of what else there is to, uh, touch upon here. I think that's the, the high-level kind of description of what we're proposing here. And again, we'd like to come back if the board is favorably disposed, but maybe Chris can offer a little more. We've perked it, he can tell you where the septic's going to go and maybe give you some other engineering details.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Chris Anderson with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. Um, yeah, so this is just a conceptual level plan, uh, that we're currently at, wanted to, to bring this before you. Um, with the existing site, we're going to be utilizing the existing, uh, access drive. Uh, on this, we're showing a twenty-two-foot wide access drive, kind of full circulation around the building. I know Fire will appreciate that. We do plan on, on having some more, uh, informal preliminary discussions with town departments, engineering, fire. Um, so full circulation around the building, two separate parking areas, one up in the rear here and another on the side of the building. Uh, we do have a parking calculation for the eighteen units, showing, um, that with the eighteen units at one point three spaces per bedroom, we're required twenty-four spaces, and, uh, we are showing twenty-five on the site with adequate handicap facilities. Um, we have been out and done soil and percolation testing on the lot, uh, so we do know it's good material, have done some preliminary sizing of an onsite septic system, uh, with the capacity for the eighteen one-bedroom units. That will be located under the parking lot in the rear of the site here. Um, and also, uh, have looked preliminarily into drainage facilities, done the soil testing, um, and rough sizing calculations for that as well. Uh, one last item I will mention is currently this site is on a private well. Uh, Mr. Maybrook and myself did have a meeting with, uh, the engineering department, specifically, uh, Kendra, who's the, the water sewer engineer, and, uh, discussed running a water main extension. Currently, the water main dead ends in front of Powerhouse Fitness at a hydrant. Um, Mr. Maybrook did retain a company to perform hydrant flow testing that did show that we had adequate flow. To extend that water main down, we'd be putting a new hydrant in, in front of the facility and running our service off that water main extension. Um, yeah, more than happy to answer any, uh, questions related to the concept plan. You know, obviously, uh, if we do get further into design, we'll show more landscaping and, and kind of pretty the site up a bit more. But, um, yeah, this is kind of our first stab at it, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, any comments staff has?
So I would think I first want to share my screen, so hold on for a second. Okay, if you can do my screen, please, Pac TV. So, just so we look, I want to just give you an idea. This is Route Three A, coming down through the center of Cedarville. So we have, the highway is up in the back here. The New True Value Hardware Store is here. The Public House is here. And to get to the site, you would come down and come into this kind of odd remnant of a Herring Pond Road, State Road, that changed. So this was like a leftover from when they did major work over here. So you had the old blueberry muffin here, pizza place here. You come out in the back, and this site that we're looking at is actually the very last site, very last property on the end. This is a fitness center here. So normally, I'm not a big fan of converting yet more commercial land into residential, but given the location of the site, where it is at the very end of the, the path here, it's in the very back, I, I think this one makes sense. Our bylaw in general commercial says that you could only use multifamily by, by a special permit on existing space that existed prior to ninety-one on the second and third floors. So to do this... prior to '91 on the second and third floors. So, to do this, as Rob pointed out, it has to be 100% affordable. They are one-bedrooms that generate a little less traffic. I would say also that if there are no other permits needed, it's really the bylaw's silent. It can be a special permit issued by this board, which I believe is their intent, or it could be a special permit issued by the ZDA. We typically leave it to the petitioner's preference which one they would want to go with. So, again, I think, given its location in the back and how remote it is, the veterans' housing, 100% affordable, I think it's a good site for this. The only caution I give you is during the public hearing, we know the sensitive issues in Cedarville about traffic and concerns about traffic. The good news here is you have an existing commercial use that could change to some other commercial use that might be even more intensive. So, I think on balance, we're looking at either, you know, not a big change in traffic flow because there's already traffic volume there, and, again, if you look at the range of uses that are allowed by right, it could be even more intensive, and going to the single one-bedroom units, again, I think is not going to have a huge impact on traffic, but as you know, as well as I do, it will be an issue. So, I think this is a good fit in this location, and with the caveat that I normally don't like to see the commercial land go to residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Donaldson?
With some of these affordable units, and if you're talking about veterans and veteran access, are, have you, has there been any discussion how many units are going to be handicap accessible or handicap created in those, out of those 18 units?
Yep. So, we're anticipating, as I've noted, the 18 units, three floors, six per unit, so the first floor would be ideally suited for making handicap accessible units, and Mr. Maybrook said he's willing to explore that.
I would say that by code and by the requirements of, for affordable by the state, I don't know what it is, we'll have that, but there will be a requirement for a certain number of these to be handicapped accessible. So, we'll see between the code, the requirements of the state, as well as what their preference is, what will happen, but something would be required as a minimum.
And how many parking units, I mean, how many parking spaces were put aside for handicap access?
I think we have two, Chris.
Just two? And you-
Currently showing two, but we do have definitely more room on the site to add more parking. This was kind of showing the minimum required per the bylaw, but we do have some additional room. If we decided to go with more accessible units to include more handicap parking, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay. Okay, so, the room is there. That was my concern. I don't have an issue in regards to converting from commercial to residential in this particular area. I drive by, I drive by this just about every day, and I think, I think that bringing some more affordable residential housing in that area is going to be addition to the, to the community there, so I'm already letting you know I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy.
Okay. Through the chair. You're definitely going to need to go to the Cedarville Steering Committee on this one, whether you go through the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning Board, and a gentleman standing in front of me, he knows well about the Cedarville Steering Committee. He's been there like three times in the last five or six weeks. Yeah, it's going to be important to go before them. Is building going to be sprinkled? Do you know yet?
It will have to be.
So, you have to bring in a new water line, a larger water line from the street if there's not one there? Flow tests? Where, what are you doing? Heat pumps? Are you doing solar panels? Just, I'm thinking out loud, going in the future here.
Heat pumps, and we are going to run a water main extension down. It currently dead ends in front of the gym. Actually, already done the hydrant flow test, showing that it does have adequate flow.
Yeah.
Met with engineering on that, so that is the plan there.
And the traffic down there is absolutely horrendous, so whatever traffic increase is caused by anything that happens here, just embellishes on the problem, so to speak, down there with the traffic in Cedarville now, although we just approved a gravel removal project down there for Plymouth, doing a building down there, unified complex, that's going to help with $2 million toward traffic improvements. That's not going to be enough to do everything down there, but at least it gets the ball rolling in the right direction. So, yeah, I'd want to see a fire truck route going around the building, you know what I mean? Maybe incorporated with some type of walkway to the business, next door, sidewalks, and incorporating some more sidewalks, maybe, in the area down there, as far as that is concerned, anything that can be done?
Crosswalks.
And striped crosswalks, obviously. That'll all come with a site plan review after you go through that, the process, but, yeah. And the heat pumps are going to be in the units, so we're not having any rooftop units, flat, there's not going to be a flat roof on this thing. I don't know yet, but-
We actually have some preliminary architectures, and it is a peaked roof.
Peak roof?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I probably asked more questions than I needed to this evening because, but I am in agreement, we need some affordable housing. Now, let's go through the process and go for this particular area, working with Cedarville and the residents down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. What's the size of the site?
I think we're just about over an acre, 44,000 square feet. I jotted a note earlier. Yeah, 44 and change.
Okay, so, some relatively high density, but, again, not in an area that it's completely inappropriate for something like that. As Mr. Hartman mentioned, traffic, traffic, and traffic are probably three of the issues that they want to talk about down there in Cedarville. So, I think that in terms of information that we as a board, and certainly as the residents are going to know, if you can actually start thinking about doing an actual count from the business as to what your traffic flow is, and then compare that to what it is likely to be from a residential standpoint, we know, and, again, it's a plumbing business, we know that there are trucks coming in and out, whether it's supply trucks coming in, whether it's contractors coming in, whether it's your own materials and workpeople going out. I know it's a busy site. That's a, that's a very busy business period. So, I think you can probably come to an explanation to the residents that this is not a significant increase in traffic, but it would be helpful because we can get traffic studies, and the answer to that is, "I don't believe you." We've heard it time and time again. So, pick a couple of good random days and just come up with the, "What's our actual numbers?" You do that, you will have a lot more credibility with anybody that you're talking to because you will have hard data, and nothing, nothing refutes speculation like hard data. Beyond that, obviously, any thoughts that you can give to creating units, some quantity of units that are less than the 80% AMI that are standard would be strongly encouraged. I understand that that's a challenge. I know that that becomes an issue, but at the same time, anything that can be done would be appreciated by this board and by the local community because it means affordability at a truly affordable level. Currently, as I have looked at the rents in Plymouth, the allowable monthly rent under an 80% AMI for a one-bedroom is actually higher than the market rate for Plymouth, shocking as that may be. Now, again, I know you're targeting a very different demographic than those people who would be paying $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom. You're looking to create something for veterans, and that's a lot more in a way of affordable, but nonetheless, anything that you could do would be very well accepted by both this board and, I imagine, by the community. But beyond that, I accept, again, the idea that, given this particular location, losing the commercial, as much as I would love to have more commercial, that may not be a great spot for truly high-volume traffic commercial, so I think that's a, I think you will find a receptive board here. Those are my comments.
Great. That's exactly what we're looking for.
Thank you very much for coming in with the informal. We always appreciate it. We like knowing what's coming in the future and trying to make it the best project possible.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Last item on our agenda tonight is the 2024 Open Space and Recreation Plan. The Open Space Committee has been working on this with staff for the last eight months.
Oh, at least, yes.
At least, in earnest, and has come up with an open space plan that's required, and Mr. Hartman, why don't you just quickly update the board in terms of what our open space plan requirements are and why we're doing this?
Yes, so you have a presentation that's in your packet. We won't go through that holidays, and I think we all want to get on with the, with the holiday shopping and everything else we need to do, but, so, this is something we've been working on at a staff level with the Open Space Committee for several months. We've had a series of public outreaches. We had surveys done. Lauren Lin did a great job. Patrick Farrar started the project, had a really good base to go on, and Lauren took it to a different level and had it finalized. We've worked very closely with the Open Space Committee to get this draft done. The most important thing about this is that it does open up our opportunity for grants, and there are a number of grants, particularly through David Gould's group in environmental management. They're aggressively seeking various open space grants and grants to help with some of his projects. Having an updated and approved master, open space plan is essential. Also, we're working very closely with our consultants on the open, on the master plan and using a lot of this as a base for some of the work we're doing with the master plan. So, these two plans will be seamless, and, again, what we're looking tonight is for a vote from the board to just support this. We can put that in the letters of support when we file this to the state for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Grandy?
I have no questions. I just want to thank the staff and the Open Space and Recreation Plan, people that put this together.
And I should point out that plans like this and some of the other plans we do in-house, we are saving the town tens of thousands of dollars by not going out and hiring consultants to do this work, and so I'm very fortunate to have the quality staff we have, that we can do some of these plans in-house and not spend a lot of taxpayer money to have them done by some outside consultant.
So, I only don't have any questions. I just have that comment, that great job. I'm going to be voting in favor if I could make a motion now to adopt the letter that was written for the Planning Board by our chairman, and I agree with it 100%.
Okay. Mr. Donaldson, any questions, comments?
No questions or comments. I really appreciate the work that was done for this. It's well needed, and I'm glad that we'll be able to add this also to our master plan and move forward, and I would like to second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It is unanimous. The board votes to support the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and thanks all who were involved in preparing this very important document.
Yes.
Do we have any further business?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second. I want to wish everyone a very, very happy and safe holiday, staff and the residents, and please enjoy your families, your time away, if you're going away, your time here, your time in town, and be safe.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
All in favor of adjourned? Meeting is closed. Thank you.